Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to the regular city council meeting for the city of Farmington. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, September 15, 2025. We are in the city council chambers, and the first item on the agenda is a roll call. Clerk Bachman, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Balk.
Here.
Mayor La Russa.
Here.
Councilmember Parkins.
Here.
Councilmember Schneiman.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor is excused this evening.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So all those who are able, please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our first public comment of the evening. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public who wish to address the city council may do so. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and if at all possible, to keep your comments to three to five minutes. And just a reminder, this is a chance for the public to address the city council. It's not intended to be a dialogue, but I can assure you, we are all taking good notes about everything that is said. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the city council at this time? Mrs. Odell, the floor is yours.
My name is Deborah Odell. I'm representing Freedom Church, 31590 Grand River Avenue. Mayor La Russa, members of the city council, city officials, Chief Johansson. Again, my name is Deborah Odell, and along with my husband Randy, we pastor Freedom Church, which is at the back of Farmington Plaza, formerly known as Frank's Nursery, and I can assure you that things still grow there. As a representative of our congregation, it is my joy and honor to stand before you today, not only as a neighbor in this beautiful city, but as someone representing this body of believers that deeply loves and values our community of Farmington. At the beginning of June, we did something rather unique. Rather than receive an offering, we conducted a reverse offering. Members of our church were invited to take funds out of the offering basket, not to keep, but to multiply through creativity, effort, and innovation, with the goal of bringing it back to do something that would be a tangible difference for our city. In our recent meeting with Chief Johansson and Assistant City Manager Chief Chris Weber, we learned of an exciting vision to establish a drone unit within the Farmington Public Safety Department. We were inspired to hear how the drones are called "eyes in the sky," or that's how the chief referred to them, and they've already aided local law enforcement in vital operations. That phrase stuck out to us, and it was a particular chord for us because at Freedom Church, we believe that one of our assignments as a congregation is just that, being eyes in the sky through prayer, intercession, active concern, and service to the welfare of our city. We pray regularly for the peace, prosperity, and safety of this city and of its citizens. We love our community and are committed to seeing it thrive. We have a gift to present tonight that is from that reverse offering, and we hope it's a small reflection of our love and our support for the incredible work that you all do each and every day. It is our sincere hope that this donation will contribute towards the manifestation of this vision of a drone unit. We trust also that this donation moves that dream closer, and we just want to be known more than just a church that worships in Farmington. We strive to be a church that participates in Farmington. So today, we would like to present the fruit of this offering along with some donations, a check which is a collective effort of the congregation expressing their generosity and a heart to give and serve. So with heartfelt gratitude, Randy and myself, along with the members of Freedom Church, joyfully present this check of $10,000 to the city of Farmington. Hand it to the chief.
If you really want drones, then this is yours.
It's all yours.
Went right there? Okay.
I helped.
She's the mastermind.
This is government in action. This is how it happens. Well, Deb, and to the congregation at Freedom Gateway Center, thank you so much. Such a generous offer to the city to help it with a major goal, especially in the Public Safety Department, where I know, you know, funding is one of those things that makes a lot of things happen. So I can assure you, on behalf of a grateful city, that it will make a difference, and I know Chief Johansson and the whole team here at City Hall will put it to good use. So when you hear the buzzing overhead, you'll know it was you. We'll like put Freedom Gateway on the bottom of it so everybody can see it. They'll know. Yeah, they'll be pulling a, yeah. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make comment at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to item four on the agenda, approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Balk, supported by Mr. Schneiman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item five, approval of the items on the regular agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Schneiman, supported by Mrs. Balk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to presentation and public hearings. Our only presentation tonight being public safety promotions. I will throw it to Chief Johansson. The floor is yours.
It's good to be back up here. Good evening. I would like to thank Mayor La Russa, the members of city council, and our city manager David Murphy for allowing me the opportunity to present two more promotions for supervisors for the city of Farmington. We gather here today to celebrate Todd Anderson and Cody Hawkins on their achievements and hard work. Tonight, they will take their supervisory oaths of office and begin new chapters in their public safety careers. The decision to promote is not taken lightly. They will be faced with new challenges, and they are entrusted with the safety of the citizens of Farmington and their shifts alike. The promotion process is not easy, but these officers have proven themselves ready and capable to face the obstacles they encounter. We expect a lot of our supervisors. However, we empower them with the knowledge and the ability to effectively lead their officers and provide for the city of Farmington. It is now their responsibility to lead by example, to mentor the next generation of leaders who will someday replace them, and to hold their officers accountable even when it's not easy. I am proud to promote and support these leaders and entrust them with our department. I would like to invite Cody Hawkins to join me. Cody is joined here tonight by his wife Kristi and his two sons, Ryan and Mason. It is wonderful to see how you boys have grown. Cody, you're an outstanding role model for your sons. Cody joined the department on January 5, 2015. After high school, Cody attended Central Michigan University, where he earned a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. He worked in the private sector for a few years as an accreditation manager for a large hospital network, but desk work did not suit him. So he put himself through the police academy and decided to throw his hat in the world of public safety. Cody spent times in our patrol division where he quickly learned how to lead. He took on special assignments and became a field training officer, a TASER instructor, and a defensive tactics instructor. On February 21, 2023, Cody was promoted to sergeant, where he started to learn the true art of supervision. And we all knew that Cody had the potential to move through the ranks quickly. Since joining the department, Cody has received four letters of appreciation, one safe driving award, six unit citations, three citations, two lifesaving awards, and he was awarded Officer of the Year in 2024. And just last week, Cody was named the American Legion Officer of the Year, which we celebrated on Patriots Day. I'd like to invite Cody's wife, Kristi, to join us. I would also like to invite Megan Bachman, our clerk, to administer the oath of office.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Cody Hawkins, solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, provisions of the Charter, all ordinances of the city of Farmington, and faithfully discharge your duties as the commander of the Public Safety Department to the best of your ability? Congratulations.
Now, badge number six. Congratulations, Commander Hawkins. I'm proud to see you promote to the rank of commander. This holds a special place in my heart because I've had the opportunity to watch you learn and grow from the very beginning of your career. It's quite a career so far. I would like to invite Todd Anderson to come stand with me. Todd is joined tonight by his wife Danielle. It's good to see you. Thank you for coming. Todd joined the Farmington Public Safety Department on June 11, 2001. And before that, he was a reserve officer with the department. Todd grew up in Farmington and graduated from Farmington High School. Todd started his law enforcement career with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and worked at the Wayne County Airport. Todd came to us all ready to work as a PSO. Todd honed his craft as a PSO and worked in the Special Operations Division as a detective. In October of 2005, Todd was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Todd continued to better himself and prided himself as a very thorough field training officer. I should know. In October of 2014, Todd was promoted to the rank of commander. And during this time, he earned a master's degree from Eastern Michigan University. In 2022, Todd took over the Special Operations Division as commander. And although we didn't have a deputy director at the time, Todd stepped in and filled many of those responsibilities of that position. Since joining the department, Todd has earned 11 letters of appreciation, 15 unit citations, one professional excellence award, seven citations, eight lifesaving awards, one distinguished service award, and unfortunately, only one safe driving award. However, he's been named Officer of the Year three times with the department. At this time, I'd like to invite Danielle to come join us. I would also like Clerk Bachman to administer the supervisory oath of office.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Todd Anderson, solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, provisions of the Charter, all ordinances of the city of Farmington, and faithfully discharge your duties as the deputy director of Public Safety to the best of your ability?
Thank you.
And you just have to sign a couple times.
A swift downward motion.
Todd, I want to personally thank you for all the hard work you've put in to earn this position. You have worked hand in hand. We have worked hand in hand for many years, and I look forward to a bright future together. Congratulations on your promotion. It is well deserved. On behalf of the members of the Farmington Public Safety Department, I would like to thank the city council, Mayor La Russa, and City Manager Murphy for their support and dedication to this department. We could not do this without you. And Deputy Director Anderson and Commander Hawkins, congratulations on your promotion. I wish you nothing but happiness and success in your new roles. Thank you, council.
Thank you, chief. With Commander Hawkins or Deputy Director Anderson, if you have anything to say, you can, we can yield the floor for a few minutes if you have any comments or hot shots or, you know. No? I know Todd's got something to say. I know Todd's got something to say.
Mayor, city council members, city manager, just like being here for the department. Thank you for all your support for our department and allowing us to take part in these glorious activities that show the progress of our department over the years. I'd like to thank my parents, Billman and Gary, being here tonight. They've always supported me, even when I was in fifth grade and went to a career appreciation-type event and told them that I wanted to be a police officer. And I'm sure they were a little bit worried, but well that I know that I would get even better, you know, career aspirations. I get to be a police officer and a firefighter. So even better. So most of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Danielle, her continued support over the years, the crazy scheduling, shift work, being called out in the middle of the night, things like that. She's always taken it, true trooper, to keep the Anderson household afloat. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay. A couple pictures, then, if we can just do a short, yeah, okay, do a couple photos.
I think we've done it. I think we actually did it like that place once. We were there one time, I think, because when I pulled it up, I started to kind of remember.
Okay.
But yeah, no, it won't be, Leo's Coney Island, I promise you.
And congratulations again to Commander Hawkins and Deputy Director Anderson. As everyone can plainly see, the caliber of the leadership and the force itself make it easy to support. So thank you for the time. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item 7A, payment application for the Thomas and School Street reconstruction. Mr. Leach.
Good evening, mayor, city councils, new manager, Murphy. So this payment includes a change order, which was basically additional sidewalk on the south side of Thomas Street, dyeing the concrete in the intersection of Warner and Thomas instead of the asphalt as planned. And then majority of the road is all put back. All the sidewalks are done. Water mains all cleaned up, tied back in with the hydrants and all necessary valves. And the only thing mainly left to do is the crosswalk mid-block down Thomas in between school and Warner, which they're currently working on. Won't answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the superintendent. Mr. Schneiman.
Can you just clarify what the additional sidewalk on the south of Thomas was specifically?
All of it.
Oh, okay. Got it.
And a little bit to the west.
School. Yeah, 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 okay. I, I get it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Balk?
No question, but just was driving by yesterday, and it really is looking fantastic. Looks great. It just, it just, the area looks wonderful, especially just looking off of Grand River. There's so much that doesn't before that. So, so then to get to that, you're like, look at that pretty road right there.
We have to know they started on the parking lot today also.
Yes, I saw that. That was great.
And congratulations and welcome to your meeting as superintendent, Mr. Leach. Forgot to say that at the top, so you did very well. If there's no further questions for the superintendent, is there a motion?
Move to approve payment application number three and change order number one to Superior Excavating Incorporated located in Auburn Hills, Michigan, totaling $353,834.75 for the Thompson School Street reconstruction and water main replacement.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Schneiman, supported by Mr. Parkins. Clerk Bachman, will you please call the roll?
Balk?
Yes.
La Russa?
Yes.
Parkins?
Yes.
Schneiman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item 7B, the RC OC maintenance agreement. Is this Mr. Murphy, or back to Mr. Leach?
You're doing such a great job, John. You should take this.
This is basically an annual contract we have with Oakland County Road Commission. You know, to give us money to plow and salt the road, maintain the right-of-way. And this year, it increased to 4%. Won't answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Leach. Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Move to renew Farmington Road 2025-2026 maintenance agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County and allow city administration to execute the contract documents reimbursing the city of Farmington up to $27,179.89 for the maintenance.
Or? Motion by?
Oh, sorry. Oh, he said support. I thought I said something wrong. I'm sorry.
Motion by Mrs. Balk, supported by Mr. Schneiman. Clerk Bachman, will you please call the roll?
La Russa?
Yes.
Parkins?
Yes.
Schneiman?
Yes.
Balk?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item C, amendment to the Farmington Code of Ordinances for the purpose of increasing the authority of the city manager as the purchasing agent to purchase goods, assets, or services up to an amount of $25,000.
So this is the second reading. We had the first reading at the last meeting. This is an increase from $10,000 to $25,000, I think, just to take some of the burden off council so every small item isn't coming to council. And these are only four budgeted items. And there was no, no request for any changes from the last time, so that's what it is.
Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move to approve an amendment to the Farmington Code of Ordinances, Sections 2-457 and 2-458, for the purposes of increasing authority of the city manager as purchase agent to purchase goods, assets, or services. goods, assets, or services up to the amount of $25,000.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Parkins, supported by Mrs. Balk. Clerk Bachman, will you please call the roll one more time?
Parkins?
Yes.
Schneiman?
Yes.
Balk?
Yes.
La Russa?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item eight on the agenda, our second public comment of the evening. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the city council at this time, the same parameters apply. Would anyone like to wish to address the city council at this time? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to item nine on the agenda, a closed session, is there a motion?
Move to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing confidential correspondence from a state attorney.
Support. Motion by Mr. Schneiman, supported by Mr. Parkins. Clerk Bachman, will you please call the roll?
Schneiman?
Yes.
Balk?
Yes.
La Russa?
Yes.
Parkins?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. The council will now go into closed session. We will come back for, open session for the remainder of the meeting, but right now, we need to adjourn to the conference room.